This conference will now be recorded.
Ladies and gentlemen, I am Mayor Andrew Dawson to here by call to order this meeting of the Sedalia City Council on its twentieth day of May, part of the 2024-2025 session. Let us proceed with purpose and dedication and values of Dragon Great City. This meeting is now called to order. First item on our agenda is prayer followed by pledge of allegiance. Chapel Matson, you have the floor.
Would you rise as able, please, and join me in an invocation in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit?
Amen.
Dear Lord and Father of all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as the Sedalia City Council members, mayor, administrator, and staff meet to hear about, discuss, and make decisions for the betterment of this community and its citizens. We are truly grateful for their service and dedication to our city. We ask your protection for all of our first responders, police, fire, sheriff, EMTs, ambulance service, hospital staffs, all who work 24/7 to serve and protect us on their own peril and then on their own time could find time to save a young man from an accident. And so a meritorious service award for our fireman Jacob Lamb this evening going well above and beyond the call of duty. We are grateful for the United States of America, our constitutional republic, for which so many thousands have fought and died to create and preserve for these 247 years. We ask your blessing and protection for all military and civilians serving our great country today, here and throughout the world, keeping our country safe from threats from without and terribly and sadly threats from within. And now, as we leave tonight, please protect us and our loved ones, keep us from harm until we meet again, and all this we pray in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
My life is made by the United States of America and a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule Paul, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Here.
Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
List.
Here.
First item on our agenda is a public hearing regarding the annexation petition received by La- Hona West LLC. Is Director Simmons here to introduce this? If not, Mr. Rich Scholz, you do ahead and introduce that.
Yes, sir. There on the screen is this piece of property right here that we have received a petition from the owners, which is LLC West, or Myona West, LLC. And so they, it is contiguous with the city limits. So at the voluntary annexation, we have a hearing. And then 14 days are, we are required to have a hearing within 14, no sooner than 14 days after receiving the petition, but no longer than 60 days. And then after the hearing, council has to let it set for 14 more days, and then council consider the annexation. So this time set aside for anybody to step up and make comments, be for or against the petition.
All right. We're going to open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak for or against the annexation petition, please step to the microphone, state your name or address, and you have three minutes. Going once, going twice? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Moving along on our agenda, we have a special service award. We're going to go ahead and invite up Chief Irwin to go ahead and present that.
Good evening, everybody. Getting a great privilege to sit up here and talk to you about these kind of things.
Jacob Lamb?
Members of the council, on Wednesday, April 24th, firefighter Jacob Lamb, while traveling to Kansas City, witnessed a significant motor vehicle accident. Being a trained and licensed firefighter EMT, firefighter Lamb stopped to assess the situation and render aid if needed. Firefighter Lamb found a single vehicle car crash, with the vehicle sustaining significant damage to it. One passenger had already exited the vehicle, and firefighter Lamb moved to the driver's position of the vehicle where he found a young man with significant injuries to his legs and moderate injuries to his face. Firefighter Lamb began his assessment of the patient, learning that he was a 14-year-old driver. Firefighter Lamb remained in the vehicle with the patient, maintaining cervical spine precautions until additional help could arrive. While waiting, firefighter Lamb detected smoke in the vehicle that turned out to be a fire burning under the dash of the vehicle. As this fire began, members of the Kansas City Fire Department arrived on scene to help firefighter Lamb. He assisted KCFD with the removal of the patient from the vehicle. Once outside, firefighter Lamb gave the patient assessment to the firefighters on scene and stayed around until it was no longer needed. Firefighter Lamb has shown what every member of the Sedalia Fire Department strives to be, a public servant. No matter the location of an incident, firefighter Lamb has shown the dedication, values, and caring nature that this department strives to meet on a daily basis. For his quick actions and dedication to public safety, for going above and beyond call of duty, and for placing his own health and well-being in danger, firefighter Lamb is being awarded this meritorious service award. Congratulations, Jacob.
Thank you, firefighter Lamb. Okay, moving along to our next agenda item, we have the approval of the previous session minutes dated May 6, 2024. Do I have a motion to second?
Motion to approve.
Right. A motion to second in the council discussion. Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. All right, next we have the council work session meeting minutes dated May 8, 2024. Do I have a motion to second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Now we have a, the reports of our special boards and commissions and committees. We have the acceptance of the Citizens Traffic Advisory Commission minutes dated April 10, 2024. Do I have a motion in second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in second, any council discussion regarding those minutes? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Now we have the roll call of our standing committees. Our first committee is Development. Chairwoman Foster, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I have two items this evening. The first of which is the presentation, an annual report from Chris Passowich for the Central Business and Cultural District. He's here. He was here. There he is, hi.
Chris, there's a remote control there.
All right, it's Passowich.
Sorry.
Chef Chris.
Diane, I was like, I always call him Chef Chris, so.
How's it going, everybody? All right, this is the budget of the activities for year 2025 for the CBCD. As you see on the screen there, the grounds maintenance is $1,500, the facade programs $25,000, the pavilion restaurants is $50,000, murals is $10,000, special events is $19,900, and all those down below fall under that. And the total, including administrative expenses, is $120,880. And basically, we're gonna, we're asking to stay where we were last year for this year. Budget is $120,880. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions? On your murals, you have pre-planned a mural already that will come up to $1,000, is that being a grant for other organizations that would want to contribute to downtown?
One of the items that was requested that we carried over from 2024 was the touch-up to the Sin-Sin Go sign. So part of that is for the, through the mural program, that the rest of that is actual seed money to where if we find an opportunity out there with a grant, we could say that we could match that with remaining. So that's another opportunity. There's two to three businesses downtown that have expressed the willingness to do murals with the downtown group. We just have to identify the rest of that fund, because it's encouraged for us to go out and seek some sponsorships and that sort of thing through grants, so.
Do we have anything further? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the second item, the CD, I have approving the annexation of E.W. Thompson, Inc. in Pettis County Ambulance Incorporated site. At the last meeting, a hearing was held to hear comments about the appropriateness of an annexation petition for property owned by E.W. Thompson, Inc. and being transferred to Pettis County Ambulance District to construct another ambulance base station. During the hearing, Director Simmons presented the petition, and Diane Simon provided background on behalf of the petitioners and offered to answer any questions. No comments have been received since the meeting. Now that the required time period since that hearing has passed, council can consider and ordinance to annex the property into the city, which staff recommends approval.
All right, call for the reading of the ordinance approving the annexation petition. Bill number 2024-84. An ordinance of the city of Sedalia, Missouri approving and annexing an unincorporated area owned by E.W. Thompson, Incorporated, Pettis County Ambulance Incorporated, into the city of Sedalia, Missouri adjacent and contiguous to existing corporate limits of said city. Second reading?
Second.
A motion, the second, second reading of this bill, any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes? Bill number 2024-84. An ordinance of the city of Sedalia, Missouri approving and annexing an unincorporated area owned by E.W. Thompson, Incorporated, Pettis County Ambulance Incorporated, into the city of Sedalia, Missouri adjacent and contiguous to existing corporate limits of said city. Final passage. I have a motion in second for the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
List.
Yes.
All in favor.
Motion passes.
That is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Chairwoman Foster. Up next, we have Finance Administration. Chairwoman Bobby, you have the floor.
Thank you. We have two presentations tonight. The first presentation being from Finance Director Pyle.
I'm going to be here, I have a little.
Okay.
Sir, I'm sorry. Okay. There on the, on the screen, you have the slide to all our use of CIN. This shows the trends that we have on our major tax collections. So just a few things to point out here. This is really for March sales that's collected in early May. So if you look across there, you can see that the used taxes were down last year for the month of May, for the month of March sales. So it looks like used taxes up a bunch, but if you factor in that last year it was down just for the month, and we ended up pretty consistent for the year, and up a little bit, then it's not quite as big of a change. But fiscal year to date, we're up $283,000, or 10.1%. The budget varies in terms of dollars. We budgeted a 4% increase, so we are about $171,000 ahead of budget for combined sales, use, and marijuana tax. The marijuana tax started in October at the cash register, so that's why you don't see any history there for the previous years. In regard to the franchise taxes, you can see that we are quite a bit under because this, this month last year, we received a large settlement of $377,818 in April of 2023, which was a class action settlement with several jurisdictions, the franchise tax regarding video. And so there was a lawsuit over that, and ultimately was settled in some hours, we received those back taxes. Transportation taxes, the gas tax was up 4.8%. The vehicle sales tax is down 22.5%, and then the vehicle fees are down 36.9%. So again, we're early in the year, but those are pretty significant, that's showing that we've got fewer vehicles being sold for so far this year. But that was not for those levels, but that's a consistent trend with how we ended last year. So for the whole fiscal year, those two were down, and the gas tax was up. Property tax payments, it's not much to look at at this point because the bulk of those taxes are received in December and June, which is about 92% of the total.
I'd be happy to entertain any questions, comments, concerns. Any questions, counsel? Thank you, Ms. Rich.
Thank you.
Now for our second item tonight, this is a presentation for volunteer time off. Our director Shannon.
Good evening. So I was asked to bring forward some information regarding a volunteer off policy and what that may look like, as well as the benefits to that. So the intentions of a volunteer off policy is to create and/or allow community engagement opportunities for the city's employees that are meaningful, purposeful, and help those in need. So at the same time, the city recognizes that participating in such activities would also enrich and inspire the lives of not only those who are helped by that, but of course also our employees as well. According to a study by the Mayo Clinic, volunteering can have a huge impact on a person's life, as well as their health and well-being. This is sometimes referred as to helpers high. Specifically, volunteering can reduce stress levels, improve mood, help people stay active, and give them a sense of purpose. There are benefits, of course, to a volunteer program that was not listed there. Goodwill, of course, community betterment, some benefits to the city as an employer, or staff relations, talent development, morale, and employee retention. And future benefits can include the reputation of the employer, as well as recruitment and networking opportunities that you may not have had before. So if this is something that, of course, we would like to look at or implement, there are several different things that we need to consider. As far as how much would we allow for the paid time off? Would it be, you know, eight-hour increments? Would it be a shift? Would it be a few days? What is the total cost for the program? We haven't necessarily costed something like this out. Would this be considered an annual benefit? Would it renew each year? What would be the eligibility? Would it be for full-time employees? Could part-time employees participate as well? Would the employee have to be what's considered as in good standing or off probation? And then, of course, would we look to have, allow employees to volunteer for a 501(c)(3), or would we open that up to other opportunities as well? So if this is something, excuse me, that you'd like staff to explore a little bit further, or put together a draft policy, we'd be more than happy to do that and present it to council for review and consideration.
Any council questions?
No, I, after looking at several businesses across our community and across the state nation, they implemented the procedure, the plan, because for the exact reasons that you described. And I think it'd be a huge benefit, not only to our city, not only to the ones who are being helped, but the ones who are helping. So yeah, I would absolutely love to see what a policy, the draft policy would look like for our staff and the benefits that they could receive from it.
Counselor Oldham, would you like to make that motion?
I will make that motion.
All right, second. I have a motion in the second, any council discussion regarding the motion in the second, directing staff to come up with a draft volunteer policy? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. And that concludes the Finance Administration's presentation.
All right, thank you, Chairwoman Bobby. But next we have Public Works. Chairman Hiller, you have the floor.
Okay, I have six items on consideration tonight. Another one is the purchase of an RFID scanners and software agreement. This was in our budget. And what it does, the scanners will allow for better tracking for quality, identify missed pickups and other issues, as well as route tracking, to provide more information for our customers. Also, the scanners will assist us in moving to a more volume-based track service, which is instrumental to devising a recycling program based on cost drivers. Staff recommends approval of this purchase.
Okay, call for the reading of the ordinance authorizing the agreement. Bill number 2024-85. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for the purchase of an RFID system and software for sanitation. Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion in the second for the second reading of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes? Bill number 2024-85. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for the purchase of an RFID system and software for sanitation. Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion in the second for the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
List.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
All of them.
Bill passes.
Next up is the upgrade of SCADA central and south east water treatment plants. As discussed in last year's fiscal year, staff proposed, and council agreed, that we would move to a universal subsidiary control and data acquisition system to help us manage our water and sewer systems. The system censors alarms and software tracks data upon the operations of these essential services to notify and provide analytic data to staff on these functions. Basically, it's going to bring it all together. The system is an on-off-the-shelf product that is sold to many other utilities and user customizable to fit our specific needs. The sewer system, on the other hand, uses a pre-existing SCADA system developed by the engineers that designed the 2010 upgrade project. These systems is not user-friendly, is not user-friendly, and can only be changed by the engineering firm that wrote it. Therefore, council authorized moving all the SCADA systems to the MicroCom product. However, we were, we were building the budget for the fiscal year, staff missed rolling the budget forward for the implementation.
Okay, we have a resolution, an ordinance, relation to this matter because it is a budget amendment. I will call for the reading of the resolution stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend the budget. Resolution 2089. Resolution, the city council of Sedalia, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year 2025. Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second, do I have any council discussion regarding the resolution? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. But next we have a ordinance, and this is the ordinance amending the budget for fiscal year 2024-2025. Call for the reading. Bill number 2024-86. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding WPC's data upgrade. Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion in the second regarding the second reading of this ordinance, do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes? Bill number 2024-86. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding WPC's data upgrade. Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion in the second for the final passage of this ordinance, do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
List.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
All in favor.
Motion passes.
Next is the city logo on water towers. We've got a bid on that. And we voted on that last council meeting, and we turned it down because we, lawless council members thought it was other directions to go with the money. But we had a couple, Russell and Julie Trelers came up and said they would pay the difference. So now all expense is covered, since no public dollars will be used now. The question before the council is to approve the contract in accordance with the procurement policies. Lower, the low bidder regularly does water tower work and has successfully performed work for the city in the past. And so we, I recommend that we, we vote on it, some passes.
All right, call for the reading of the ordinance authorizing the agreement. Bill number 2024-87. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for painting the city logos on both water towers by utilizing 100% of restricted donation funds for said project. Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion in the second regarding the second reading of this ordinance, do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes? Bill number 2024-87. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for painting the city logos on both water towers by utilizing 100% of restricted donation funds for said project.
Final passage? Second.
I have a motion in the second regarding the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
List.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
All in favor.
Motion passes.
Fourth item tonight is annexation and utility service agreement with premium hold LLC connection to water distribution system at 2630 James Lane.
Okay, we have a ordinance authorizing the annexation and utility services agreement, call for reading of the ordinance. Bill number 2024-88. An ordinance authorizing an annexation and utility services agreement for connection of property located at 2630 James Lane to the city of Sedalia's water distribution system. Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion in the second for the second reading of the ordinance, do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes? Bill number 2024-88. An ordinance authorizing an annexation and utility services agreement for connection of property located at 2630 James Lane to the city of Sedalia's water distribution system. Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion in the second regarding the final passage of this ordinance, do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
List.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
All in favor.
All right, motion passes.
Our fifth item is grain agreements, storm grain improvements projects, Area 2, 8, 28, and 30. This is part of the ARPA grants. It's the last four projects of the, of the eight original ARPA grants, and it's fully funded by these grants. So we have four ordinances to deal, to vote on.
All right, we'll go ahead and start with the first one. Call for the reading of the ordinance authorizing the agreement for project area number two. Bill number 2024-89. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for storm drainage improvements project area two. Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion in the second for the second reading of the bill, do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes? Bill number 2024-89. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for storm drainage improvements project area two.
Final passage? Second.
I have a motion in the second for the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
List.
Yes.
Robinson.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
All in favor.
Motion passes. Now we'll call for the reading of the ordinance authorizing the agreement for project area number eight. Bill number 2024-90. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for storm drainage improvements project area eight. Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion in the second regarding the second reading of this ordinance, do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes? Bill number 2024-90. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for storm drainage improvements project area eight.
Final passage? Second.
I have a motion in the second regarding the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Foster.
Yes.
List.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. Now, we'll call for the reading of the ordinance authorizing the agreement for project area number twenty-eight.
Bill number 2024-91. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for storm grains improvements project area twenty-eight. Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion to second regarding the second reading of this bill. Do we have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-91. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for storm grains improvements project area twenty-eight. Final passage? Second.
I have a motion to second regarding the final passage of this ordinance. Do we have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. Now, we'll call for the reading of the ordinance authorizing the agreement for project area number thirty.
Bill number 2024-92. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for storm grains improvements project area thirty. Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion to second regarding the second reading of this bill. Do we have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes.
Okay, my sixth item is a two-way stop sign at West Seventh and South Beacon. it, that it wasn't needed, but then they had another meeting today, and they took another vote, discussed it, took another vote, and it passed three to two to go ahead and put stop signs east and west on Seventh Street. So, that's what I'm recommending. I sat there in the meeting and listened to it. They discussed it very much. There was, right after they failed the deal, then that week, there happened to be two accidents on that corner. So, it felt like they needed to go ahead and do that.
Okay. We'll go ahead and call for the reading of the ordinance establishing the two-way stop.
Bill number 2024-93. An ordinance establishing a two-way stop at the intersection of West Seventh Street and South Beacon Avenue. Second reading?
Second. I have a motion to second. Do we have any council discussion? And those were additional facts that were said that came about today whenever they met for their special meeting at one-third.
And this is in next school phone?
Yes.
Give a hand.
Any other council discussion? All right. We have, let's see, we've got a motion to second, so let's go ahead and all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-93. An ordinance establishing a two-way stop at the intersection of West Seventh Street and South Beacon Avenue. Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion to second regarding the final passage of this bill. Do we have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. All right. Thank you, Chairman Hiller. Next, we have Public Safety, Chairman Robinson here on the floor.
We have the need to approve an agreement with Spartan Metro, with FELF fire for Spartan Metro Star Custom Pumper at $991,000 plus a little bit, which is under budget. The amazing thing about this is it takes 800 days leave time.
Wow.
So, that's why we are doing this.
All right. Let's go ahead and call for the reading of the ordinance authorizing the agreement for the purchase of the apparatus.
Bill number 2024-94. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for the purchase of a Spartan Metro Star Custom Pumper apparatus for the today fire department. Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion to second regarding the second reading of this ordinance. Do we have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-94. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for the purchase of a Spartan Metro Star Custom Pumper apparatus for the today fire department.
Final passage?
Second.
All right, I have a motion to second regarding the final passage of this bill. Do we have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes.
The second item is the license, our flock is licensed, because the license is quite a reading system. Chief, would you like to come up and join us and kind of give them an idea of what it is, please?
Good evening, council. These are the items through flock safety, the license plate reader cameras that we want to put up around our jurisdiction, along with the Condor stationary cameras that we also wish to put up in strategic areas that we can monitor what's going on in those areas. Both of those systems integrate with each other. The flock can alert us to vehicles that have flags on them through law enforcement, if they're wanted vehicles, if there's wanted people inside that's actually flagged with that license plate. It can show that and give us real-time information on incidents that are happening if the suspect vehicles go through those areas. Those are budgeted items, and they are both under budget.
How many, how many cameras?
Eleven. Well, eleven from the license plate reading system, and then three from the Condor system. And one of those, we will put up at Main, our plan is to put up at Main and Ohio to help monitor the train situations there.
Yes.
It's also a major route into Sedalia.
It's a movable camera.
Yes. We can.
These are stationary, right? They're not on the face colors?
Correct. Yes.
I might want to remind the council, they were one and two on our budget. Any other questions, council?
As you're going, we'll go ahead and call for the reading of the ordinance approving and accepting the quote for the purchase of the LPR system.
Bill number 2024-95. An ordinance approving and accepting the quote for the purchase of license plate readers and cameras for the today police department.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion to second for the second reading of the ordinance. Do we have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-95. An ordinance approving and accepting the quote for the purchase of license plate readers and cameras for the today police department. Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion to second for the final passage of this ordinance. Do we have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. All right, other business, we have liquor licenses. Call for the reading of the liquor licenses.
We have one new license tonight, two renewals. We have a new one for Henry Newton doing business at the Lions Club, BL Box 1085 for their cornhole tournament at the New Corporate Stadium on the state fairgrounds on June 1st for picnic license, and renewal for Henry Hatfield doing business at East Street Bar at 1201 East Third for Liquor by the Drink and Sunday Sales, and Lancey Ulrich doing business with Hampton and Sedalia at 3090 West Ninth for Liquor by the Drink.
Motion to approve and block.
I have a motion to second to approve and block. Do we have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Are we going to be miscellaneous items from the city council or city administrator? Do you have any?
Just want to say the reeling ceremony for Whitman Air Force, George Whitman, it hits a little harder now that it must not be upstate. It was a very emotional day.
I would like to say, first of all, a thank you to Russell and Julie Childers for giving us over the finish line, along with all the other owners for digging deep into their own pockets to give specifically to the water tower local project. Their understanding of this vision and the deep community pride they have in there or our community is truly heartwarming to me. The generosity of these individuals is a huge part of what I believe makes this community feel so great. Wanted to say thank you all.
Certainly, thank you, the audience. Anyone else?
I, and others, and for nothing else, I have the responses from the last Good and Welfare. Again, we'll be brief, and really have only a couple items, or a few items that was asking for responses. I will not go through the ones that did not have, did not request responses, or did not need a clarification. Mr. Gibson had two items, but the second item was an item he wanted information on. He has been hearing rumors that the city is going to annex Walnut Hills and other areas. He expressed concern that if the city could not keep up with the infrastructure needs now, how would they handle more? He asked that if that is seriously being considered, that they talk to the people that would be affected people are doing. As a response, since I have been here, the city has only entertained voluntary annexation. I have not heard of any push for involuntary annexation. Therefore, the property is initiating, is initiating the annexation on a voluntary annexation. Also, as I understand it, if the city did initiate an involuntary annexation, the process dictates notice, and then a vote of the people being affected, as well as a vote of the entire city, and votes would have to pass. So, there would be, if there was an involuntary annexation, there would be a lot of communications and public votes and all of that kind of stuff. And as far as involuntary, of course, the person that's suing petition does. Mr. Holford, 1400 South Barrett, he had a couple of comments, but the one that he indicated that the trees across the street from him at 1409 South Barrett that are in the way are all so bad, and the lady has been trying for two years to get the city to take care of them. He suggested that we should advertise better that we will hop out trees for free, and for ones that are in bad shape, they spend my higher priority. As a response, I asked Public Works crews to follow up on the trees at this X. The preliminary report, although it don't have full information yet, back the preliminary report is that there were some limbs that they did not clean up immediately due to damage power lines at times of the storm that he was talking about. But then, from what I understand, they did trim those up later, and they got those out of the way. They will also take a closer look at the other trees there and see if they need to be moved up on the list to be trashed, but they are on the list to be trashed. Rachel Monahan, she would like for the city to consider extending the time for the school phone, since she has noticed that kids are still being picked up after the timeframe Rachel Monahan, she, she would like for the city to consider extending the time for the school phone, since she has noticed that kids are still being picked up after the timeframe has entered, ended. Just as a matter of, of point, as Councilman Oldham asked for a point of information at that time, and indicated the police are working with schools to increase safety, and this information will be passed along through chief of law or any group of at the beginning. So, they are working on those, those issues. Gary Lobal, the clarity of the Parks Director regarding dealing with the contamination of the site from the Aquatic Center did not reassure him much. He expressed that the city should not have bought the property since it was contaminated. As a response, the city did conduct due diligence prior to purchasing the property to include a Phase One and Phase Two environmental study, and is aware of what needs to be done to clean up the property. Unfortunately, this property is, is in the center of our city, and was not being maintained, and had little chance to be redeveloped if the city did not pay attention. By going down this path, the city is able to not only get the property cleaned up, but turn into something that greatly benefits the community. We assure the public, the city will not put people in danger of being exposed to dangerous environmental concerns. It will be cleaned up and, and contained. He also stated the city needs to look at how police and firefighters are paid overtime. Response, the, the rules that Mr. Lobal spoke of are put into place due to the nature of police and fire operations being twenty-four-seven, three-hundred-and-sixty-five day operations. Since these operations are so much different than other jobs, the rules for overtime compensation are different. Sedalia compensates its officers and firefighters in accordance with the law and what is common practice among other agents. We wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Lobal's sentiment, though appreciating these first responders, and their willingness to put their lives on the line to protect themselves. Diane Simon from Coal Camp, she asked about the status of the code adoption process, and Mayor Dawson at the time confirmed that June is the correct date, that that's coming back, the ninety-day period is either up or close to up, and a comment period, and so that is coming back at the two. And he has indicated he would get with her, but address any other concerns or questions that seem right now. So, that's all that was, that's the end.
All right, with that, ladies and gentlemen, we now arrive at the Good and Welfare section of our agenda. Before we begin, I'd like to remind everyone of the framework for the segment. Each speaker has a question, step forward, clearly state their name, address, will be allowed three minutes to present their statement. Please note, this is not a session for dialogue or debate with the City Council, nor is it a period of question and answers. It is a time for you to make your voice heard, for us to listen, and your statements to be entered into the public record. We ask that all remarks be kept respectful and pertinent to community manners. Step on up.
Lord be with me, and comfort those who are in need of your courage. Amen. I respectfully request for the city to go back to the citizens of Sedalia with a good plan and good numbers to rebuild our wastewater treatment facility. I respectfully request for all honorably discharged veterans to be allowed to pay free building permits to work on our homes. I respectfully request for all City Council members to get free trash pickup and refuse containers for life, and this financial benefit should be reported as income on their taxes. I respectfully request for all City Council members and board of Public Work meetings to be live streamed on the city's official Facebook page. I respectfully request to defund code enforcement and start over. I make a personal appeal to Kelvin Shaw. Please resign. We can no longer afford any more refounders, and if Kelvin Shaw does not have the courage to resign, I'd ask this council to have the courage to fire him, and provide us city leadership that can do a better job. I reside at ten-twenty-two West Seventh, with the most beautiful woman I have ever known in my life. She is my heart, she is my soul. I am, I am Albert Rainey. I'm leaving now. Thank you very much for your time, and your quietness. Don't really need any comments. Thank you.
All right. Would you like to come on up next?
David Goodson, sixteen-forty, Hedge Apple Drive. I just wanted to follow up with the Council. Calvin, I, we talked back on, by email on May eighth, you sent me an email at seven-fifty-six, I responded at three-twenty-six. We accepted our agreement. Then I followed up again on the thirteenth, you responded simulator that day around ten-thirty, and so we're waiting on a resolution from the City Council, so we could get this wrapped up. Where are we at? That was all, I was hoping I could just get that answer, if it's something we're waiting to do tonight, something needs to be done next meeting, or why we haven't done it. It seems like a pretty simple thing to do, we've all agreed, and I appreciate that, but what do we need to do to get it wrapped up?
Mr. Goodson, I'll talk to you after the meeting about that.
Okay, appreciate that. One other thing I would like to echo, I truly believe, we should have these meetings, all meetings, live streamed on our Facebook page, I've been saying that, I still believe that. The audio on all these meetings is bad, it's bad, sometimes you can hear in the room, it's horrible on the dial-in, I'm not, I can't remember the name of our system, I've used it once or twice, but it's bad. The Facebook streaming is so easy for anybody of any age to use that in today's world, the security risks are minimal, I mean, it's just, that should be, something that could be, and so easy, and I think you would find, you would please so many people, and it'd be so easy for people to stay involved, and stay in tune with the Council, and what's going on, and be much better informed, so simple to do. I mean, Andrew, you know, I know, I mean, I do it, you guys do it, it'd just be simple, and I think it would please a lot of citizens, and something for you to consider. Calvin, this question's for you. You know, you know, we've, we've had some businesses locate to the county, who are currently building in the county, who are all in the city, but going to the county to build. We've had other businesses who have chose not to build here, and other issues, you know, we've talked about with our code enforcement, fire inspections, all different types of code enforcement, whether it's construction, or ordinances encompassing that. You're the CEO of our community, and I would like to know what level of responsibility you personally take for the performance of these departments over the past several years, three years, is kind of back when I started noticing it. And then I'd ask you, what kind of rating do you give yourself on your job performance on a scale of one to ten, with ten being the highest? And I'd like to say to the Council, I have had the opportunity to work with some amazing CEOs, entrepreneurs, and job creators over my almost thirty years in business. Some of these brands are real, real man brands, and I'm fortunate to be associated with them. But one thing I've learned from those, all these people, that they conspire, in me when we have serious talks about business, fire fast, hire slow. I think the Council needs to really think about that. Thank you.
All right, up next. Anyone else? Anyone wants to go in for a audience?
Seeing no more comments, I'm motioning to the closed-door session for legal advice, real estate, and negotiate a contract.
Second. In closed-door session.
All right, we'll move to closed-door session.
You need a roll call, Mr. Mayor, roll call.
Roll call, please. Hold on. What's that? What's that?
Procedurally, we, procedurally, we had already moved through public comment, with a motion and a vote by the board. At this point, there's a, a motion pending to go into closed session. Mayor, would be your call, what you want to do at this point.
We're in the middle of doing business. Maybe you can be up there next time, Mr. Limbaugh. Roll call, please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
August?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Are we ready to go?
We're missing three.